The best, the best place for my kid to get an education is right here in Berkeley. I moved, I moved from Belayo in a house to come out here in RV for my kids to have a better education. And if you take that away from them, then you got a whole nother problem with me. And I mean that with my life. You cannot take me and my family away from these RVs in Berkeley, period. I would literally die before you do so.
When I look out in the street and I see this big RV, I feel kinda scared. I really feel scared with, I see RVs with closed windows, no one ever showing their faces. So, there is an RV in front of my school and it's been there for months. It's just scary and sometimes I have, I get so spooked, like my brother said, I have to call my parents to come and pick me up.
Ma'am, please, he's a young man, he's a kid. Could you please, ma'am, could you please sit down? It's not acceptable for you to be there and intimidate the speakers.
I am so proud of my sons. And they came into a hostile crowd, but I tell you what, what I'm really disappointed in is they were more scared in this room than they have been walking home.
Ma'am, please, it's just really outrageous. You're heckling a child and it's unacceptable. Okay? We're back in session. If the council members can please join us back on the dais, we're gonna start the meeting. And Mr. Finnicom, I believe you're next in line to speak.
So I think I had one person, Louise, if Louise is still out there, can yield me time.
Okay, thank you, Louise.
All right. Okay, so I want to take you back nearly 100 years to the 1920s, 30s. Berkeley at that time had a law that prohibited parking on the street in the early morning hours for longer than 45 minutes. And this became an issue in the 40s when war workers were going to the night shifts at the shipyards and they were leaving their cars on Berkeley streets and taking public transit to the shipyards and they were getting tickets. And people at that time had suggested that way to meet the housing crisis in Berkeley, when Berkeley would be to have well-managed trailer parks. The city, the powers that be completely resisted and prevented that because even though the motto of the city of Berkeley was "A City of Homes," this did not extend to people living in trailers. And the suggestion was the trailer parks could go to El Cerrito. So that's just a little, little piece of history. The wording of that ordinance back then was very similar to some of the wording of what you're considering tonight. So, it's interesting, Berkeley has, a lot of people have fascination with the idea of tiny homes, creating tiny homes. And RVs are actually tiny homes on wheels that don't cost the city any money to, to create. I think let them live here under reasonable rules and you can establish reasonable rules. I have a friend who's lived in Berkeley longer than me, that's saying something, that's more than 40 years. And he lives very quietly in his car and he had a choice of spending his disability check entirely on renting a room and having no money to live on, or living in his car, showering at the Y, and having enough money to survive. That's the sort of people, he has, he has a truck actually, not an RV. Don't criminalize people like that, please. He's a long-term Berkeley resident. Someone said earlier, you, where are all these people coming from? Many of them have been here for decades. Berkeley's biggest transportation program actually is residential permit parking. Is there anyone who can yield me another minute? Residential permit parking, which allows people who are homed, people like you and me, who have addresses, residential addresses to register our cars, to park on the street overnight. It's very strange that you would be considering a law that would allow people who do not have homes not to park on the street overnight and, and it's sacrosanct to allow people with homes to store their empty vehicles all night on the, on the street. It's a bit of a strange conundrum. So, I want to say that, that some people seem afraid of what they think of as dangerous lunatics living in RVs and vehicles. I can assure you that there are just as many lunatics living in homes in Berkeley.
So, if you can please wrap up, Mr. Finnicom.
Okay. Okay. So, and I'll, I'll just finish by saying that people in RVs are actually the only people who will have a fully functionable, functional, functional, livable home in Berkeley after the earthquake. So let's, let's go for resilience. And, and I'm not opposed to having, to having reasonable rules if there's an RV that's causing a problem that's, there have been RVs that parked on my block and people worry about them and I don't recall them causing problems and then, then eventually they move someplace else. Because the, in, in my experience, people who are living in their vehicles want to stay invisible. They don't want to cause problems. They don't want to harass neighbors and become a target. So, so that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I just want to take a beat here and say that I think that by supporting this revised ordinance, you are supporting reasonable rules. That's what the permitting system is for. And the permitting system would supersede the 2:00 to 5:00 AM ban on parking. So I think that that might be a missed point here and I wanted to elucidate that. But unfortunately, there are really good actors for RV dwellers and there are some bad actors. And for the past year, my inbox has experienced a deluge of emails from businesses that have been negatively impacted from the disproportionate concentration of RVs in the West Berkeley area. They're suffering from strewn refuse and waste, unstable and angry behaviors, improper disposal of waste containers, et cetera. I know you all have received these emails as well. Small businesses are vulnerable and those in West Berkeley are struggling to stay afloat in the midst of online competition and high overhead costs. Can I have a minute? Thank you. These impacts from street living have brought them to their knees with decreased patrons and decreased sales. You are all in a hard position and I feel for you and I support your effort at a solution with this revised ordinance. Our streets are not equipped for permanent living. We don't have pumping stations or water hookups. It also puts Berkeley in a very precarious position to be the only city in the Bay Area providing services to RVs on the street. However, all my business members don't want to see people suffering without homes and that is why we support the ordinance to find services for the most vulnerable and permitted parking for RVs on the street. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Scott Huffman from Reed Investments. We are the owners of 901 Gilman and 1049 Gilman in West Berkeley. The existing 72-hour parking rule has not been enforced in a really long time and that is essentially allowing the RVs to stay in the public right-of-way for months on end. And while a small portion of the people are Berkeley residents and have fallen on hard times and we've heard their stories tonight, we also have seen that there is a vast majority of people who are coming here because it's a place where the rules aren't being enforced. So, the city of Berkeley is not obligated to provide a camping spot in perpetuity to anyone that chooses to come here. And we don't believe that it's something that's sustainable long-term to continue that policy. And without finalizing the ordinance that passed on February 28th, the city is essentially extending an open invitation to anybody who has an RV in the Greater Bay Area and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Call me CK. I bring a different perspective to this because I was in property management here in Berkeley, Oakland, San Francisco for some time, until I became homeless a few years ago. I won't go through the details of that, but I lost my vehicle and I was on the streets. Took me about a year and a half to get an RV, a very small one. The services in Berkeley, they gave me some food, they let me use some computers and that was about it. Didn't get me off the streets. When I saw that, the RV got me halfway off and I'll tell you something, being in an RV is as important, as much of an improvement getting off the street as getting in a homeless for an RV, maybe more so. You're functional. Some people do a bad job, I understand that. What I did is I cleaned up around mine, there wasn't noise. I was called a neighbor by the people and I did a circuit. I managed with that RV to get up, to get into housing again, well, kinda housing, into a building again for about four years. Did I have a minute? For about four years, but you know, some of the property industry is kinda dirty and that guy kinda did us wrong and I lost my place again. So I was back out, I had another plan to get myself out of here, just out of Berkeley Rock, I could spend some years and afford it. And so I was living in a vehicle again until Berkeley police took that from me because of parking tickets. I got booted three times, I got towed twice, and I got given a deal to help me, which was a total catch-22. So I'm back on your streets again and I can tell you the services aren't much. So you can, you can say that, I don't know, I don't know how you're gonna send more people to these services and everybody's gonna get a better deal. Right now, I've been trying to rent a place in Berkeley. I have the means to do it, I can't find one. And so I sleep on your streets. Now if you think that driving these people in, in their RVs back to the streets, you think they're gonna leave. Where are they gonna go? You're wrong. So, it's time to face it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming. I hope that our staff have been in touch with this, this gentleman and I hope that he has been in touch with the hub. Definitely sounds like somebody who we should be working to try to get connected to permanent housing. So thank you.
Hey, what's up, city council? I had another minute from Ryan, but I think Ryan had a, he's an older guy, he had to move his RV. But he was here recently. But hey, I want to say thank you guys for, you know, it's been a tough night for everyone. Also, everyone here, there's a lot of different opinions about how to go about the process and everything like that. I currently live in Berkeley, I pay rent, I work in San Francisco in the Upper Eight. I'm actually a San Francisco native and I'm moving out here because of the rent in San Francisco. The thing I wanted to say about the RV situation is that people that are, that are in RVs usually get labeled as like, like less than human or, you know, stuff like that. Literally like people that are like in the tiny house as an example, or in, in an RV situation, if they don't have that, they're literally on the street. And there's a huge, that's what's gonna happen to people, you know? If the city can't provide it, people are gonna start doing it on their own, you know what I mean? For example, there's a lot of foreclosed housing, you know what I mean? That's in West Oakland, Berkeley. People are gonna start taking these buildings over that are owned, you know, by the banks and stuff if, if people just can't, you know, the city can't start, you know what I'm saying? So, I don't know, I just hope maybe that we can all get together and fix this problem because it's just not here, you know?
My name is Simon. So, prayer to the quick prayer for the four directions, north, south, east, west. Great mother of beings, may you have wisdom, guidance in your presence and your duties as council members. Also for the alonies who lived on this land long ago, lived without homelessness, everyone had a place in society. I think they're a great place, people to think about. They used to live here, let's take them in our consideration. Quick story, end of World War II. There were bodies in some immigration piles, millions of them, millions of them. They are bodies, we have millions of them. This was Germany. It wasn't the Jews only who were taken. First, it was the gays, the liberals, but before them, the trade unions, before them, it was the people who people despised and whose society despised. It was the lame, the ill, the homeless. They were first. This is where you will tip America into being that Germany. I have more to say if you want it. And if you really want the answer, what will happen is that they will arm those people you kick out of here with guns and they will let them back in here for the liberals, for the Jews, and for everyone else.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Alfred. I live up in the 8th district and I have three specific policy asks. The first one is that Berkeley should legalize house cars and RVs on private property because right now you can't even do that. The second one is that Berkeley has over 200 miles of streets. You spread out the RVs across the city, barely won't even notice it. In my neighborhood, we've got about two or three vehicles on the block all the time at least and nobody really cares. And the third thing is that the duration that if people are getting permits, we should look at longer than three months. You should look at maybe a couple of years because that's about the time I've seen friends who've lived in vans, that's about how long it takes for them to get their life together and get a better paying job and get an apartment. So, if we want to really solve the problem, those are three policies. Thank you.
Good evening, council. So Berkeley's a compassionate place. It's one of the reasons I love living here, but it's really clear that the status quo isn't working and that a lot of our compassion is being exploited. And, you know, I think, I think we need action, but what's, the conversation we're not having is that we're a city of 100,000 people and we have very limited resources. And when I voted for Measure P for more funds for homeless, I thought that money would go towards the greatest need and that's people that are experiencing substance abuse. That's people that are having mental health crises. That's the truly destitute. I didn't think we'd be setting up basically sanctioned RV encampments throughout the city. So, so I just think we need to keep resources in mind. I don't think this is a question of compassion, this isn't a question of parking, this is a question that we have limited money and we have limited time and staff is not, staff's a finite resource. And as a city, as a member of this city, I want that money and I ask that money is spent on those that are, that are most destitute. And I don't think that's RV people, by some of their own admission. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the young gentleman who just spoke doesn't understand the issue. He seems to think that money for the homeless will go to people in RVs. In fact, the people in the RVs are preventing their own homelessness and most of them are working and that's not where the money would go. So let's, let's correct that. The other thing I'd like to address, I hope I have enough time, is the gentleman whose children came up here and were terribly frightened, I think unfortunately in part because he had frightened them. My, my mother and her sisters, my mother survived World War II as a child in China and there were many things to be frightened of, but they certainly weren't afraid of people who were poor or destitute or living on the street. And if I may have just one more minute from someone, thank you. Recently, I took a trip to Sacramento and at every stop, at every Bart stop, at every train stop, there were so many people living in the stations because I left very early and in fact, I left so early that I had to step over bodies in the street because I left at 5:00 AM and they had not been roused yet. And I called my cousin in Minnesota and I said, Lars, I had to step over bodies in the street. And, and he said, I know exactly what you're thinking because when we were children, our mothers from China always told us that the decadence in China before the revolution was so extreme. There were peasants who came in to the city and lived homeless, they perished, they had terrible, terrible conditions. And this is what led to the revolution. And so perhaps it is not such an issue of compassion, perhaps it is simply an issue of pragmatism, which the gentleman who spoke before me doesn't quite understand. If you don't want revolution, you have to provide a basic level of service. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Dawn and I work here in Berkeley. I hope everybody can hear me okay. I'm afraid I don't have the most popular vote here tonight, but I know that all of you have received numerous letters and correspondence and phone calls from the people that I do represent. And those are the other residents of Berkeley and they are the people who work here and a lot of the people who live here who are scared to come up. So, I want to say I recognize how sensitive the subject of RV parking is for everyone concerned and I also recognize the need for a balance. It is not just RV people here, there are the people who support the services as well. And we also would like to be heard. As a city, you've worked very hard to bring in commerce to your area, businesses and companies that would and do provide jobs and opportunities. As a property manager for 901 Gilman Street, which is the old Pyramid Brewery, it's been my privilege to see the once-empty building become a very complex. Can someone grant me some more time? Thank you. A bustling mini-complex of growth with new tenants and local workers and they are integrating into the Gilman district and they're supporting this community with everything that they can. But there is an upfront and brutal cost for the RVs to park around the building. And I know that some of the RV communities are very nice and they keep it clean, but that's the 10%. That is not the 90% of the RV communities. And all of these businesses, they contribute and they contribute with funds for all of these outreach services. So I want to say that there are problems for the new businesses that you're bringing in. If you get a business to transfer from San Francisco like the bakery and then their customers can't come in because they can't get to the business, because they have to drive around two blocks in order to find parking and they leave and they never come back, the newly transferred business is gone. That's, it's not fair to them as well and we are part of your community. So, I'm saying that they do their part to support Berkeley. Please remember that they are a part of the community. Please remember to represent them as well. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jim Alnis Benson. I'm a homeowner in Berkeley. I've been a homeowner for 20 years. There are people in RVs and buses living on, near my home and if they're gone, I'm going to miss them. I'm here to speak up on their behalf. The criminalization of poverty is wrong. It is wrong, it is not the way, it is not a solution to the problem, it is an extension of the problem. The problem is we have a housing crisis and there are reasons for that, part of which was the mortgage crisis and the way that the, that the investment bankers took advantage of that and bought property and, and raised the price of housing. There's a home around the corner from my house that's a million point three on the market. I can't afford that. I wouldn't be able to afford to live in Berkeley if I were to buy today. So I urge you to be fair to the people who are poor and go after the wealthy who caused the problem.
Hello. My name's James Whiting. I'm the director of the Potter Studio. We are a large ceramic arts organization. We've been in Berkeley for 45 years and we've got a lot of students, we've got a lot of members and artists who use our space. We're on 8th Street, right by Harrison, so right in the middle of, middle of the, most of the situation or a large part of it. We are largely dependent on street parking for our employees and our students and our members. And as much as we, we do acknowledge the RV people in our area as, as being a vulnerable population and hope the city council can find some way to assist those in need, but living on the streets of a business and residential area is not a sustainable long-term option. We've got, we've got seven to 10 RVs and vans just on our one block and there's, there's a lot more. They probably take up 50 spots within two blocks and, and our people just don't have anywhere to park. Can I get another minute? Thank you. Our studio is probably 75% female and we've got a significant number of artists that are over, over 60 years old. We've been threatened by the RV people on our street and the police say they can do nothing. So our students are afraid to go out to their cars parked on the street at night. It's a serious problem. We find human feces in our paper trash recycling bin. No, it's not.
Please, it's not interrupt the speaker.
Yeah. And our students, many of them older, have to walk several blocks with, you know, heavy stuff to carry. The issue is not gonna fix itself if you do not make the tough decisions you were elected to make. It will impact the ability of Berkeley to retain businesses that make Berkeley the great city it is. And we pay business taxes to help your sal, to help pay your salaries and fund various local government initiatives and we employ 21 local people. We provide an incredible art space for hundreds, we deserve to be heard. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Mayor and council, my name is Charles Clark. I'm a tenant in Berkeley who's worked very hard to find a cheaper apartment. I support actually the passage and enforcement of the original item, but the one under consideration now I also support. I oppose any moratorium such as the one in supplemental one, which tells us, and I quote, "Vehicular dwellers pay taxes in Berkeley, visit our restaurants, theaters, businesses, and contribute to our economy." If they can afford to do all those things, then why can't they pay rent like the rest of us? I yield the rest of my time to the next speaker.
Let's not disrupt the meeting. Let's be respectful of everyone and their opinions. We're Berkeley, we can do better.
My name is Carly. I live in District 2 and I'm asking you to uphold this ban or this modification that you're making. It's definitely better than nothing, but I still feel that it, I actually don't feel that it goes far enough. There are not 200 formerly housed in Berkeley RV dwellers. We're being, people, I've been living here in District 2 for over five years and I feel like I'm being taken advantage of. I feel it's unsafe, I feel it's unhygienic to allow this to continue. For those RV dwellers who've come from outside and adopted Berkeley as their home, the city is enabling this behavior. There's nothing compassionate about permitting people to live like this and subjecting taxpaying citizens and local businesses to the degradation of our resources and quality of life. If you're going to allow this-
Please, let's not interrupt the speaker.
Can I get a minute? Thank you. If you're going to allow this, then I ask each of you who vote yes to lead by designating the areas in front of your own homes as open for camping. Of course, for councilmen, of course, for council member Bartlett, who hasn't lived in Berkeley for years, that should be interesting. You are all well aware that Berkeley's lack of enforcement and general disregard for taxpayer quality of life makes us a magnet for the whole country. There are a myriad of videos on YouTube explaining how to live in a vehicle and make Berkeley your home. Please do right by your taxpaying citizens and act with integrity. Quality of life and safety should be your focus. I'm gonna say that I'm a homeowner because I worked hard, I saved, and maybe one day I won't be able to afford to live in the city thanks to the passage of Measure O and other taxes that I'm sure are coming down the pike. And you know what? When that happens, I'll leave Berkeley and it will be okay. It will be okay because I can no longer, I choose to not work so hard. But I don't understand how we are, taxpaying citizens are being expected to-
Thank you, ma'am.
-pay for somebody else's chosen lifestyle.
Thank you for your comments. I'd just like to remind everyone to please be respectful of the council as well as the staff and each other and please direct your comments to the council as a body and not regarding any individual council member, as noted in the rules of decorum. Let's be respectful of each other.
Okay. I don't think I can say all this in a minute. I actually wrote 12-page speech before I even arrived here, which I'm sure surprises no one by this time. First, I want to address the business owners who seem to have concerns, legitimate concerns over the potential financial situation caused or brought upon them by the RV dwellers. And I understand that, but at the same time, I have to tell you, I've lived in multiple areas all over the United States and I've also lived in multiple areas in the Bay Area. And when you are a business owner and you are a council who strongly works to bring more business here and more of the type of residents that you want to see frequenting your businesses, sometimes it doesn't work out the way you planned. I watch in places like Mount- I watched in places like Mountain View in Silicon Valley where exact same thing was happening, and people were angry that the wrong kind of people were around their businesses, and they wanted the right kind of businesses there, people there, to support their businesses. And what happened in those towns was the right kind of people came, and then they turned on those businesses, and they all went vacant and bankrupt anyways. Can I get another minute? It's just a cautionary tale, okay? This council is failing the city in its true majority. You have no right to enact such bans until you have had to experience the same hardships. And I know some of you, and I'm speaking to the mayor, have experienced these kind of hardships in your life. Each council member should know what it feels like to have someone knock on their door and hand them a notice, having to vacate their home because the landlord wants to renovate and lease the property at double or even triple the rent. Being a good tenant does not protect you from homelessness. Each council member should experience the shock of having wage garnishments because of a surprise six-figure uncovered medical bill, what happens all the time in this country from a standard surgery when they couldn't pay it. Having good health insurance does not protect you from homelessness. Each council member should know what it's like to work multiple jobs while attending full-time college... Can I get another minute? ...classes just to save the $6,000 needed to secure the rundown studio they are so desperate to get, only for the landlord to give it to someone else who could get the money just a little bit sooner. Being a good student at a highly-regarded school does not protect you from homelessness. Each council member should know what it's like for that same student to graduate with honors and land a good job, only to find their wages barely cover their student loan payments. There are even less apartments available now, and they have to resign themselves to sleeping in a vehicle. A good education and gainful employment does not protect you from homelessness. Each and every member of this council should know what it's like to sleep on the streets with limited access to restrooms, water, trash receptacles, healthcare, and mental health services after years of serving this country in our military. Years of dedicated military service does not protect you from homelessness. And that's what we're talking about. Can I get another minute? And that is what this issue is about. It is about...
Those individuals have already yielded time, I'm sorry.
Homelessness.
You already spoke, sir. But I'm, I'll give you a few more seconds to wrap up.
I'm all set.
Okay. Ms. Rossifick is yielding her minute.
If you cannot truly stand for what is right and decent and serve your people, then you should resign your positions and pass it on who those, to those who are not afraid to serve, protect, and truly lead. The entire country is experiencing a housing shortage, coupled with wage stagnation right now. I have done a lot of traveling and talking and have found this is happening everywhere, not just all over California and the Bay Area, not just all over the United States, but all...
All of the people who are here represent other people too. Everyone who spoke represents people they know who agree with them and who are glad they come down here and speak. Our representation is as big as yours. That's why you would be a minority dictating to us a majority. Can I have another minute?
Mr. Turets, thank you.
But you're passing up a really big opportunity, and you do it by appealing to your own regu, rules and regulations. All of these people who have come down here today, both pro and contra, they represent the people. They represent the reality of what this alleged policy is that you guys are trying to put together, which everybody has been saying is dehumanized, even those who favor it. They favor it with, you know, like, a disclaimer. But you have all these people together. You could put them together. You could get us talking to each other. You could say, hey, the people who are here today, who can talk to each other, should supersede what we bring to this agenda and which is already written, and let's listen to them, and let's let them make policy.
Thank you.
But without that, you are a minority...
Thank you.
...dictating to the majority.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm a homeowner, and I'm really tired, sick and tired of hearing people whining about an RV parked on their street. I live three blocks from Berkeley High and the first street where, where the high school kids can park, and we have a half a dozen parked there. And you know what? That's okay. We want to live in a community where we give people the chance to live, you know? We don't whine about it. And so I'm really just tired of that. Second, I think this addendum, we need to recommend, we need to recognize, Jesse's addendum is only a recommendation. It is meaningless. The central, uh, city manager can completely ignore it as she ignored other directives and recommendations by this council. The mayor is trying to pull the old switcheroo and confuse the public with a meaningless piece of blather with no teeth. His addition is a con. Item 21 is about accelerating gentrification, criminalizing those living at the periphery. And Ben, you can stop this. You can be the one to vote that'll swing this. When it comes up to 11 o'clock and they want to extend the meeting...
Thank you.
...don't extend it.
Thank you.
You can prevent this meeting from going...
Thank you very much.
...and this item goes down the toilet.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Please go to your stand.
I'm going to make an effort to be brief, but if I go over, if there's anyone with time left to seed me, I'll be grateful. My name is Tom Appel. As I mentioned before, I came to this town in 1972, second grade, Washington Elementary, all the way through Berkeley High. When I graduated from Berkeley High, I could afford a two-bedroom apartment on an electrician's salary. Now, you can't afford a one-bedroom on a police officer's salary. That's just the facts in Berkeley. I urge you to suspend the vote on this issue, and here's why. We already have existing laws that if we were enforcing those laws, could be used effectively. We don't need another tool of legislation that may be unconstitutional. When I lived on East 12th in Oakland, I understand the issue. I lived in the industrial area. Refrigerator trucks would park outside of my bedroom with their refrigerator motor running. You want to know how hard it is to sleep with a refrigerator motor running outside your bedroom? 1, 2, 3 in the morning? Did someone say that? Can you give me a minute?
Those individuals have already yielded time.
Is there anyone? Thank you. We had a homeless encampment across the street. Now, I was taking care of my mother who has Alzheimer's in that neighborhood, and taking care of my children when they were with me, because they lived mostly with their mom. We had a homeless encampment. The guy that owned my building, he would urge me, hey, can you call and complain about that RV that keeps parking? And the police would 72-hour it. And I didn't really feel comfortable. I didn't want to do this guy's bidding, but you know, once in a while I called to complain. One guy, one morning, a police officer was driving by, an Oakland police officer. I flagged him down. I said, what can we do about that dilapidated RV that's got a tarp over it? And the officer said to me, well, you can call and complain about 72-hour, but we can't tell people not to sleep in their cars because the Supreme Court told us we can't. So I don't know what Supreme Court that was, but I would encourage the attorney to confirm or, you know, this thing that you're doing may not be legal. You may not be able to tell people that they can't sleep in their car, because I believe the Supreme Court of California has already told you that you can't. But the point is, it's not about that. It's about the fact that we do not have affordable housing. When I lived on University, two years they spent building that five-story building at 1122. I lived next door. I owned the business on the other side. Two years, my sidewalk was closed, damn near put me in bankruptcy. That building has no affordable housing in it, I'm here to tell you, because I rekeyed every single unit in that building. I've seen every single unit. I've seen the blueprints. I know who the developers were, and there were no public postings. So there are laws in this state that are not being enforced, laws in the city that are not being enforced. We don't need a new one. Let's just enforce the ones we have. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Mr. Mayor, you all know me and Barry Braden from Fieldwork Brewing, and many of you have heard from me personally about this issue. I do, and my business does, support the, um, the RV ordinance as presented and with your addendum. The moratorium, I think, is a, uh, not a very good idea, but I do support the, the ordinance because, as Councilmember Harrison said in the first, um, time we revisited this in, in late February, dispersing the RVs out into some of the other districts and making it a bit easier for, um, not having them as concentrated as they are now, I think is a great rational solution to this problem. And, um, I mean, I don't want to criminalize anything, and I hope that we'll find a long-term solution for this. And I've also, uh, I'll finish, but thank you so much.
No, no, you, do you need a few more seconds?
I was just going to say, as I've told a few of you, I'm happy to participate in anything that's a nonprofit fundraising opportunity to find a place for, uh, long-term habitability for our RV community.
Thank you, Mr. Braden.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for finally addressing this critical issue. I'm a resident of District One. I support the recreational vehicle ordinance. The good people of Berkeley have allowed this free-for-all to go on for far too long. People are taking advantage of our largesse, and we have become a magnet for problem behavior because of it. Other cities don't allow this, and we need to look no further than YouTube and various blogs which pitch Berkeley as the best place to street camp. I personally know two families that have recently left Berkeley because of the RV and homeless problems and the petty crime that often accompanies these populations. Enough is enough. I support the ban and also support city council directing Berkeley Police Department to enforce the ban once it is implemented. Thank you.
My name is John Wolfe. I'm a resident of District Seven since 1984, and also a part-business owner in West Berkeley. I have three friends who were formerly homeless on the streets of Berkeley. Two of those friends got off the streets by, one scraping together enough money for a used car, the other with an RV. They're all now properly housed, but it is a very effective path out of the streets of home and doorways and the chances of sidewalks of Berkeley is to get yourself an RV or a car. I understand there's a counterproposal from council members Robinson, Davila, and Harrison with a friendly details added by Councilmember Bartlett, and I hope the council will consider that and will not support the RV ban. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, hey, how you doing? For all the business owners to say they pay taxes, I do too. I ain't got the best job, but I work at McDonald's, and I'm also Chanel's mom. And that job supports me and my kids to the best of their abilities. No, I can't afford nothing on $15 an hour out here. I can't. Everyone knows that. But I do my best, and they love the RV. They go to Crackmont Elementary School, and they've been doing the best they can at this school. I've never seen them do so good. And if this, this ban occurs, you know, it's going to make it harder for them to get to school on time, harder for me to keep my job, harder for me to support them and teach them the things that I've been able to teach them. I've had more time for my family. You know, I've had more time to work on myself. I've even rescued a couple people's dolls and brought them back without asking for money. I clean up other RV's trash. I've got yelled at by a business owner for my kids drawing with chalk across the street. And it wouldn't be fair for you guys to ban us and treat us like we're less than human when I'm a, when I'm a mother, I'm a working woman, and I'm a taxpayer.
I'm Virginia Browning. I work at Talavera Ceramics and, um, just recently got in a discussion about this issue with my family members. Their employees aren't, they live as far away as Fremont, and this is not unique to this business. As the woman who just spoke was saying, if you ban people from living here, you're going to not have people being able to work here. And I was just told by a man that I admired, because this is my experience with people I've known that have lived in RVs, some of them are very resourceful. He said he was a refugee. He's one of the people that spoke earlier and was talking about the, the resourcefulness, and that's my experience too. He was saying in Aspen, which he called white and wealthy, they had to finally allow people to live there because, and then somebody else was saying the reason was because they weren't being able to find people that could afford to work there. And I...
Ms. Browning, you can continue.
Okay, thank you. So, my issues are that there are very resourceful, helpful people, eyes on the street, that live in these things at times. It's not, I, I don't envy you, your job. I'm not totally blanketly criticizing you either. I, I, I agree with the person that said somehow dialogue has to be worked out. It's not simple, I get that, and not everybody's going to want to be on the city council. But this, it's, it's, it's an issue about people that you're going to need to have housed, and it's really the way, a wave of the future. You have, it has, it's a complicated issue, and you have to address it. I hope I got covered all my points. Thank you.
Ms. Browning, at the beginning of tonight's meeting, we adjourned in honor of Rob's memory, but on behalf of the entire city council, I just want to say how deeply sad and sorrow we are for your loss.
I'm a District One homeowner, and I'd first like to commend the council members Davila, Harrison, and Robinson for their no votes on the RV ban last time. But that the city seeks to ban RVs, which are homes for people, including families, in the middle of an affordable housing crisis is incomprehensible, unless, as I sometimes believe, this is about gentrification in a hot real estate market. But perhaps the council is simply in panic mode, and is just not thought to consider alternatives. For example, Betsy Morris has cited successful projects in Eugene, Oregon, of urban campgrounds for vehicles and tents, or a program giving property owners the ability to lease land and/or utilities in exchange for partial property tax abatement. Creative and compassionate alternatives such as these can serve as models. Do the right thing and reject the callousness of the RV ban.
Like Alfred, I'm a member of District Eight. I occasionally see RVs, and they have not caused me any problem, but I understand that they're not, um, they're not the ideal solution. But we're in a housing crisis, and I think I'd like to commend Councilmember Robinson that, like, how, like, their, their housing, they're not, they're not perfect, they're not even necessarily good, but, like, it's housing and, I, I don't know, I, I just feel like we have to find, if, we, like, we can't just push it off to somewhere else. And, uh, I, I don't know, I don't think there is a good solution, and I know you, you're working hard at it, but, um, I, I don't feel like, uh, pushing them to wherever else doesn't want them is, is the solution.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Jefferson. I'm a longtime Berkeley resident in District Two. I want to thank you guys for passing the initial RV ordinance, and I'm encouraging you to keep the terms of the RV enforcement in place. I walk three truck blocks to my job every day and have encountered less than three to six RVs daily during this walk, six today, if you're keeping score. I regularly encounter the following issues: RVs extending dangerously into the streets such that there are minutes to bicyclists, out-of-state licensure, open dumping of waste into the street, which has been regularly reported, belligerent and confused RV dwellers that repeatedly threaten me and my partner without provocation, open drug use, presumably meth or crack, and human feces. For 20 years, I've lived in this wonderful town, yet I've never encountered the deterioration we witnessed in the last two to three years. There is no right anywhere in this country to camp... There is no right anywhere in this country to camp, park, anyplace, anytime, just because you want to. Additionally, a whole segment of RV dwellers are explicitly here to take the benefits of the city offers while offering nothing in return. There are how-to, can I get a minute from somebody? Thank you. There are how-to YouTube videos to facilitate this. This is unsustainable and is unfair to all the long-term residents and legitimate at-risk residents who are denied services because of the drain on limited resources created by the RVs and encampments. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a couple comments. When my children were young and they were afraid, they're afraid of things in the closet or things under the bed or anything, it was my responsibility to show them that there's nothing to be afraid of, that there's nothing under the bed, there's nothing in the closet, there's just something, and help them and soothe them, to assure them that they're safe. Your responsibility as parents to, maybe there's nobody in the RV, maybe it's just sitting there doing nothing, and then nobody's in it, it's just being stored somewhere unless you knock on the door or introduce yourself or make the first step to prove or show that there's nothing to be afraid of, or maybe there is something to be afraid of. You know, I'm afraid myself. I don't know if there's a rapist in the RV next to me, you know, I have no idea. Nobody knows, because nobody takes the time to find out who's out here, what's out here, where we're going, what we're doing. I have a plan, and my plans are compromised every day. You know, if I go outside to just do anything, you know, oh, she's outside, or if I'm in there, oh, nobody comes out. You know, what do you do, you know? Thank you.
I'd like to yield my minute to Teresa.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Teresa, and I represent the tow companies contracted with the city of Berkeley. I think it's important to note that we, the tow companies, I'm not here to argue for or against RV ban, but we would like to briefly explain the stress on our businesses and the community and put in what an RV is towed and what it was towed for and how the cost can be. On the average, depending on the value of the vehicle, it can stay anywhere between 15 to 120 days. The cost of disposing the motorhomes runs about $2,500. That does not include the tow or the storage or anything to do with that, that's just strictly disposal. I understand there's a lot of frustration in the room, and I implore you and everybody in here for taking the time to speak. I understand both sides, and I deal with both sides, and unfortunately, I have seen some of the customers tonight. But we're respectful, we have conversation, and we want you to talk about the issues and concerns that goes on with the motorhomes. Unfortunately for myself, being in West Berkeley, I came in to open up my office today with a needle on the fence. It happens, unfortunately, it does happen. Drug use is rampant in some of the communities, but not all. A lot of people are trying, a lot of people are students, but there is some ability to the 72-hour rule where you do move the vehicle. I know you guys are looking at the permits. I'd be happy to have any conversation with anybody here briefly come at my office. I do know that you guys are in a very tough situation. I also know that law enforcement is not happy to have to deal with this too. It puts them in a bad situation, quite frankly. I know people living in the ice plants, there are some really great people that I deal with. There are some people who are not great, but at any given time, it is a painful and a hard situation, and we do feel the pain of the entire community, and it is our community. I've lived here for over 25 years. I'm operating in December 25 years in business, and I do understand, and I work with a lot of people, so thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight, and certainly should take you up on your offer to be in touch as we move towards implementation. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, do I start now? Okay. Not having a house does not make me a criminal. I want to remind everyone, you are only one mistake, one paycheck, or one disaster away from being in my shoes. I ended up homeless, living in my car after leaving an abusive relationship. Now by police and civilians alike, I am treated as a criminal, awoken at all hours of the night and attacked just for sitting on the sidewalk. Not getting enough sleep makes it hard to get through the day. You might be surprised to learn this, but we are human beings, and sleep is a basic human need. Driving out vehicle dwellers is driving out working citizens, college students, and even younger students just here to get a better education. Classism kills.
Russell Bates here, a long-term resident of the city of Berkeley. It seems like there's a distinct divide here that I see. One is business owners, the other are the people of Berkeley. Now, in my mind, the ultimate basis for change would be what somebody alluded to earlier is not avoiding revolution, but acknowledging the circumstances that create the situation that lead to a revolution. Now, when you oppress people, when you exploit people, when you don't pay them enough, when the greedy landlords and the business districts create animosity for people who have a lot less, you've got the haves and the have-nots. And the haves, there's very few haves, the have-nots are becoming more and more and more. And since we have a pig for a president, there's gonna be more and more of that happening. Shit rolls downhill, and it's rolling down fast. I'll leave with a meme that I saw that creates the image that I want to give here of what I see happening with this kind of resolution going on. There's a meme of a coffeehouse that said, one of the liberal statements, okay, everybody, we don't care what country you're from, what religion you are, you're welcome here, right next to the sign that says restroom for customers only.
Thank you.
There you go.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, City Council. My name's Steve. I'm in District Two. I'm a homeowner and a taxpayer. I'm, I am a former unemployed individual times three. I've had to leave this state to get a job. I've taken the responsibility, personal responsibility, to make that happen, and I've come back. But with that, I like to say that I would like you to adhere to the current or whatever your previous RV camper. Now, new term that I've learned is "schoolie," sprinter van and conversion van, overnight parking van, or whatever your guys are coming up with. We need to take back our streets, give your taxpaying citizens, renters and businesses the right to equality of life that is dictated by the tax dollars you collect. Bring back the accountability. Find ways to help your own citizens, rich or poor, not the grifters and those from out-of-state and other communities that continually influx into this area. That is the biggest problem you're gonna run into. We have sprinter vans that are costing $40,000 that, can I have another minute, please? Thank you. That are costing $40,000, which could be going to rent or whatever, so we have new individuals coming to this town that really shouldn't be on our streets. We have Uber and Lyft drivers that are now living in our streets to sustain a living, but coming from many other communities where they can be living elsewhere or they can go back home. Focus on the community and the quality of life it includes, crime prevention, and our overall safety. That is a big issue. We have a lot of problems out there right now. Fix our streets and our infrastructure, we know that. We have many upcoming problems that are coming with pensions, et cetera. Keep the streetlights bright, we know that's an ongoing issue right now, many, many issues there, and that'll solve some of the traffic accident issues. Clean up our parks, make it viable for everybody, not just the homeless, not just those who decide to sleep there. Prevent pollution and future fire and health hazards that could lead to regional disasters, which we will have, whether it be earthquakes, fires, whatever. Compassion without a purpose doesn't solve anything. Seattle, San Francisco, and now Berkeley are dying.
Thank you.
It's not sustainable. Quality of life should be your job, your job number one.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Please, let's not interrupt the speakers, be respectful of everyone.
Hello, Council. Whenever we talk about homelessness, our favorite sentence is "housing first." But unfortunately, the reality is that we don't have enough housing, so I say "stability first." I say "community first," and this RV ban actually moves us against of providing stability and community to our unhoused residents in the Berkeley. If today Berkeley passes the RV ban, tomorrow Oakland passes the RV ban, if California does it, if the country does it, my question to everyone over here in this room is, where do we want our RV and encampment unhoused residents to go? Do we want to actually live in a country that protects to own the gun but denies the right to leave? If the answer is no, then please say no to RV ban. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I am a renter in District Two, and I would like to say that the RV dwellers, the homeless, they're the victims of a housing shortage that does not have to exist. The price of rent has skyrocketed, not because housing is inherently expensive, because of laws designed to enrich a minority of property owners at the expense of the majority of people. And to criminalize RV dwelling is to criminalize the victims of such policies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alex. I live in District One. I'm sick. I went to a good school, I can program, and I have wealthy parents, and I've been homeless because I'm sick. What do you happen, what do you expect to happen when you ban long-term RV dwelling? Like, do you think people have somewhere to go? Do you think they're homeless because they want to be? Like, Berkeley is a good place to be homeless because, or Berkeley is less of a nightmare to be homeless than the rest of the country because we care about people, and there's no one else who is going to help. There's nowhere to go. Like, the Council has asked people not to interrupt the speakers repeatedly, like, has asked the, like, anti-ordinance crowd to be more respectful, and like, I understand that your job is hard, I respect your job, but we're shouting because we're begging you to hear us. It's on you. Please, help.
I represent 420 people who couldn't make it here tonight that are against the ban. Just kidding. Another myth is how many homeless people came from Berkeley? How many homeless, born and raised people left Berkeley? It's unknown how many of these people are from, I just talked to the Housing Commission there. It's unknown how many people, the homeless people in Berkeley are from Berkeley. So what's gonna happen to these people when they're pushed out, when they have to pay their tickets and they don't pay their tickets? 30% of all women in the world in prison are in prison in America. You're making more women prisoners? I wouldn't put you or you or the police or the CIA and any of my worst enemies in Alameda County Jail. It's inhumane. You're taking away housing in People's Park, and you're taking away housing on the street, and you want to destroy People's Park? There's no sense in that.
Thank you.
And how many of these veterans are, how many of these homeless people are disabled?
Thank you very much.
You people for paying military taxes?
Thank you for your comments.
But you're not gonna help veterans?
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
So the speaker has two minutes? Mohammed Godmi once famously said, "A nation's greatness is determined by how it treats its weakest members." The same could be said for any group of people, particularly a city that publicly projects how compassionate and quote-unquote "progressive" it is. Sadly, the majority on Berkeley City Council didn't seem to remember that during the last vote on the RV ban, and this can't be allowed to continue because so many people are vulnerable in ways that are actually life-threatening. I'm here to urge you all to follow the courage of Councilmembers Davila, Harrison, and Robinson, who took the high road and voted against it, to listen to the wise advice of Betsy Morris, who presented a variety of ideas from Eugene, Oregon, on how we can coexist with RV dwellers in a way that's safe and free of public health risks for all, including allowing people to park in driveways and yards of willing local residents with permits and proper sanitation facilities. Oakland member, Councilmember Rebecca Kaplan also contacted you to remind you that your current plan is demonstrably ineffective and that there are options by working with houses of worship and other alternate sites to find parking. Recognizing that this is part of a larger, ongoing problem, please stop funneling more resources and quote-unquote "incentives" to people who already have enough wealth for several lifetimes. And by this, I mean large commercial developers who are not building affordable housing. We do not need more yuppie warehousing. It's never going to trickle down. And there are options by working with so many of the really innovative proposals that are out there to exploit land that small property owners have that might be willing to share on a reasonable basis for everyone. It's this mindset that we have to change. The problem is that a lot of people just do not understand the concept of privilege. They see how hard they've worked, but they don't understand that anything, an injury, a long-term illness, and they could all be in the same situation. That has to change, and we're going to remember how you all vote.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
This evening is one of the stupidest wastes of time I've ever seen. If you multiply the number of people in the room by the four hours that we've spent, that is many hours that could have gone to more productive use. I've lived in Berkeley, well, the first time I came was 60 years ago, and I've been a homeowner in Berkeley since 1973, and I've been paying taxes that whole time. And my family started a successful high-tech business, I'm still here. Why in the name of heaven, if we have people who need houses, we don't recognize what a good solution it is for them to live in RVs? We talk about what I think are basically pretty foolish ideas of custom-building little houses so they can have little roofs and little curtains and things. RVs work. I lived myself in a trailer that was smaller than an RV for a whole summer, pregnant, two-year-old, oversized husband, and we got along just fine. They're very good. If anybody has any extra time?
I think all the minutes have been yielded by now. Oh, Mr. O'Malley, okay.
That's my oversized husband, yes.
I would hope so.
I recognize on the dais really quite a majority of people for whose election I worked very hard. As I look around the room, I recognize a remarkable number of people who also worked for their election, many of whom I met in the last campaign. If you don't understand who put you up where you are, you'll have to learn in 2020 who that is. I appreciate the hard work that some of you have done. I appreciate the conscience that some of you are suppressing, and I suggest that you get back in touch with your conscience.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Andrea? I'm sorry, who's yielding time? You already spoke, Mr. Bates, but, yes, ma'am. Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that they haven't already yielded.
I don't want to steal an extra minute here. Hey, look, I, you know, I gotta say that I, when you, Mr. Mayor, are trying to call us to civility, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. Civility would be the way to go. But I have to say this about civility. Some of us feel like our lives are in danger. Some of us feel like the lives of people we care about are in danger. And when you put that next to the imperative of parking, there's a frustration that overtakes me. I feel like I need to shout out. It's about survival, and Mr. Mayor, I would hope that you would understand that. And the failure to see that, sort of, like, we're, there's two sides of the room, there's a conflict, and I believe it's about how we got here and the lack of a process that brought those stakeholders together. Where is that task force? Why isn't your proposal the product of a conversation? My God, parking, we can't solve that in Berkeley? If the spaces that are being taken up by, what about the parklets? If parking was such an urgent matter, why are you giving away parking spots for parklets? Why aren't you requiring more on new construction? Why aren't you requiring more parking to be made? But I believe we could work these sanitation needles, drug, we could work it out. So if you're concerned about the, what can I say, the confrontational atmosphere, Mr. Mayor, I believe you helped to create it. And it was the lack of a conversation and a dialogue that got us here. And I would like to think that if you really care about civility, that you will... And I would like to think that if you really care about civility, that you will not allow this proposal to go through tonight, and that you will wait for a proposal that is the fruit of some kind of conciliation between the various stakeholders. That would be leadership. Because they're going, you know that, like she said before, if you ban RVs, sure, cities around this Bay Area and around this state will do likewise. That will be on your head.
I'll just note for the record, as was noted in the report at our last meeting on February 28th, that many of the adjacent cities in the Bay Area do have prohibitions on RV parking. So would you like to let Ms. Hammergren speak? What I said is that many adjacent cities already prohibit long-term RV parking, just for the record. Ms. Hammergren? It's not true.
Kelly Hammergren. I was recently visiting friends in Vista, California, and we happened to watch the local news. Actually, their local news covers a lot more than our local news channels. And what was on that evening was the RV ordinance for San Diego. And I assume that all of you have looked at this legal case quite closely before you wrote the RV ordinance, but I think everybody in the room should know that there was a lawsuit against the San Diego ordinance, and there was an injunction of that ordinance. And just recently, on February 22nd, the City of San Diego rescinded their ordinance against trying to block RV parking. And so, we've spent hours here tonight, you've spent hours writing this ordinance, and I think we should take a lesson from San Diego, that they tried to do a very similar thing. And after their lawsuit court case injunction, they unanimously rescinded their ordinance prohibiting RV parking.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yeah, and if anyone wants the lawsuit case number, I've got it up on my computer.
Thank you very much.
I am speaking absolutely only in my own capacity. I have a pretty nice white-collar job, as many of you know, and yet, if it weren't for the rent control that I have by the grace of God, who knows where I would live? Perhaps a car. RVs are housing. RVs are missing-middle housing, if you will. And if we unilaterally evict 100 families, there will be 100 more homeless families on our streets. And I do not envy your jobs or mine in trying to allocate resources to figure out how to care for these 100 additional families. Thank you.
Thank you. So if there are any other speakers after these individuals, you can please line up on the side.
This will probably take more than a minute, but hopefully someone will be able to save me some time. Dear City Council members, I believe it is essential to be as creative as is possible to solve this dire problem in a way which will be reasonable to everyone involved. So therefore, I urge you to postpone this vote on the agenda items so people will have time to come up with creative solutions. And it's really not that hard. There are lots of creative people in town, and I'm sure that at least one of them can come up with a workable solution. For example, here's one idea. Have you seen every so often those blue handicap spaces in a residential area? What's that about? Is that right now, a property owner is allowed to request for a blue handicap space to be put in the parking area in front of their property. So how about now allowing property owners to request for an orange "RV Parking is Okay" space to be put in that parking area in front of their property? In a city of over 100,000 people, surely 200 or 300 property owners, whether in residential, commercial, or industrial areas, will be just fine with RV parking and will make those requests. And the city could also issue permits to the 200 or so existing RVs on the streets.
So how much more do you have, sir?
About 15 seconds.
Okay.
They could issue permits if there is concern over a lot of new RVs coming in. So the orange RV parking spaces is one creative idea which might work, but it certainly isn't the only one. So therefore, please postpone the vote on this item so we can instead have a truly just and reasonable solution to this urgent situation.
Thank you very much. Sir?
Alone territory, you're so proud. You wear it like a badge of honor. For the homeless in Alone territory, do you really have the right to kick human beings off Alone territory? How respectful to this great land's legacy, progressive Berkeley. To progress, to lead. Enough mediation, Mayor, City Manager, Council, I believe you have the right information. And you're gonna have to do something that's unpopular with some people. We need you to do what's right. We invite you to be courageous. We invite you to be leaders tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So before we proceed with public comment, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and extend the meeting to 12:30 for the purpose of completing the final items, 28, B and C, and 21, seconded by Councilmember... Please, let's have order. Councilmember Han, you second. Let's call the roll. 12:30. Call the roll.
Councilmember Kusarwani?
Yes.
Yeah. Davila?
I would like to say, the H, no.
Councilmember Bartlet? Councilmember Bartlet?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Harrison?
No.
No. Han? Councilmember Han?
Councilman Han, how you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Wengra?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Droste?
Yes.
Mayor Arreguín?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion carries. So we are extended to 12:30. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'll try to make this quick. The last time I was up here, I explained to you how when they did the exact same thing you're trying to do right now, that it caused a child to die before the law was even passed. Everybody gave me a real heartfelt look, but obviously, nobody checked it out because it was a dead baby. Dead baby. You people are doing the exact same thing people did, that created a dead baby before the law was even passed. And you don't even care. You don't even care. Now, what I want you to do is go home tonight and remember what you're doing right now, what you planned on doing before you got here. That's the part that really irritates me, is that you made a nice little plan to do this without really informing the city. Because if this city knew, there'd be 5,000 people out here instead of 50. That's what you don't understand, and you're gonna end up losing your job, buddy, for doing this. That's what's gonna happen to you. Now, think about this. Dead babies. When you go to sleep tonight, remember, dead babies, because that's what you're doing. Dead babies.
Thank you. Sir, would you like to speak?
Hello, my name's Rafi Joynojosa. I've lived in Berkeley for about 28 years off and on. My only question is, if people end up getting kicked out, if you end up voting on this or whatever, I read under the thing something about a permit, a three-month permit or whatever that's allotted to some of the people who were living out there with RVs. I don't live in an RV, I live in an SUV. My question is, is, once that ends up happening, six wheels or more constitutes a commercial vehicle. So is the same law going to apply to city workers and to other people who don't live in their vehicles, who basically are taking a nap or whatever, AKA Uber riders, East Bay Mud, all these other people, because of commercial vehicles? That also constitutes a, you know, someplace to rest or someplace to do other things like that. It's just a question. Another thing is, I just hope that you guys don't vote on this today and postpone it. Thank you for your time.
So you guys seem pretty business-oriented. Let me speak to your economic sense. We are projected to have a 25% to 33% decline in growth in this country. This is paired with a 25% increase with homelessness over the past two years. This trend is probably gonna continue, right? So as Berkeley is a place of high economic activity, people are gonna continue to come here. What is your solution for people coming into the area as people are going to migrate to areas of higher economic activity? At the same time, there are cultural concerns. Artists generally have a hard time making it in places like this, even though this is the kind of place for artists. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask for an extra minute, please? Thank you, guys, appreciate it. All right, I'm gonna start. I would like to begin by saying not everyone in this room or the general public outside these doors have received information of the amendment of this ordinance. Not enough copies? This is a violation of a person's right to public information. My name is Jessica Prado, and I live inside my RV. I'm here to speak tonight for myself, as my neighbors living inside vehicles have come out to here to deliver their own message. I'm happy to see you all here. Tonight, we're not just simply voting for an overnight parking ban, but to ban people from sleeping between the key hours of 2:00 in the morning and 5:00 a.m., when people have their deepest sleep and bodies are on healing mode. It's the beginning of an even worse public health crisis. Park on 8 and Harrison, at the Gilman District along the curve, we have found refuge, community with each other, a home. My neighbors want a simple solution. Accept us as an autonomous community and allocate a safe place for people to go. Stop throwing us around and causing chaos. We're not disposable people. My community has been asking to work with the council repeatedly on the issue since leaving the Berkeley Marina, and we were always shut down. We are not allowed to be on the table when it's our very lives that are on the line. Now, every vehicular resident has become an illegal resident of Berkeley, an oxymoron for a city that prides itself as a sanctuary city. A sanctuary city for whom? Only the vulnerable populations? How is this not discrimination against all other vehicular residents? All human lives matter. Stop using people as bait to claim a shelter crisis, obtain the fender of money, and never use it on solutions that are needed the most. Stop spending it, stop spending it on outreach when people don't even need a person knocking on their door. They need a roof over their heads right now. Support alternative housing. Y tú, Arreguín, si dices que eres mexicano, acuérdate que la gente mexicana también somos pobres. Y si de verdad eres uno de nosotros, ten los suficientes pantalones para tratar a la gente pobre con dignidad y respeto. Esto no lo estás haciendo a tu sociedad. Tú, tus padres y yo venimos aquí por un sueño, y la gente que vive en la calle también tienen un sueño. Nunca lo olvides. Y si no me entiendes, es porque se te olvidó. Tonight, this meeting and what people have discussed inside this room will go down in history. Future generations will look at this and will frown our discriminatory behavior to other fellow human beings. In which side of history will this council stand? Against the poor, or will you sell out to the business money? Thank you.
Christine? Christine, would you like to start?
Thank you.
Clock is ticking.
Good evening. My name is Christine Schwartz, and I live in District 7. I come to you tonight because this is a very close subject, as I've dealt with homelessness with my family in the past, as a child, and in my upbringing. Most of you will be disappointed with what I have to say. I appreciate this ordinance because I believe this will be a way that we can resolve homelessness. I think that we should have a system where people can come forward, have their application put forward, into a system where we can have, where we can vet people to receive services and homeless solutions. I don't see living in an RV as a solution. May I have another minute, please?
Ms. Brostrom, thank you. You guys already spoke, but thank you for...
Thank you for the minute. I wouldn't want people to be homeless. I would think that most people who are homeless would want to have housing, affordable housing that they can afford. The situation on the streets is bad. You're exposed to crime, you don't know what your next day's gonna be like. I want resolution here. So if this is gonna pass, I would have an expectancy that we're gonna have solutions. Somewhere that people can park their vans and their RVs and have a dumping place for them, for their waste. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on item 21? Now's the time.
I believe I have a minute from the young gentleman there.
Okay.
So you don't need to know where I stand, you've probably read my op-ed. I just want to discuss some practical matters. I drove here at 9:00 from my house, it's about 10 blocks away, and I looked carefully on each side of the road to see how many spots there were that could take RVs. A lot, at least 10. This is in District 4 and District 2. And I keep saying to myself, why do you insist to keep all the RVs in West Berkeley in District 1 when they could be easily distributed around the city? And they wouldn't make an impact anywhere. I just don't get it. You could do this. You have the regulatory power to limit the number and to make sure that they get distributed around the city. You could do this, and everyone could live reasonably happily. So I'm gonna put my money, as it were, where my mouth is. I have in front of my house the perfect spot for an RV. It's too big for one car, too small for two cars. We used to have an RV and we parked it there. I think there's a lot of these spaces around, and I think there's a lot of people who would be perfectly willing to accommodate and welcome someone that is otherwise homeless to be a good neighbor in front of their house. I'm willing to do that. But you guys aren't. You guys want to throw them all out of the damn city, and I'm really pissed about it. And you really shouldn't do this. And that's just cruel. Thank you.
Ms. Ritchie?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Houses don't come in Crackerjack boxes. And I beg of you not to approve this tonight. Let's come together and work on this. It's just like the cannabis deal, you still trying to work it out. You approved it before you set up any rules for it, and now you're trying to work out some rules for cannabis when you should have did that before you approved it. Please, please, do not approve this tonight. Let's come together in groups and areas and work on this and come to a consensus on this. I beg of you, do not approve this tonight.
Thank you. Okay. Any other speakers? Are there any other speakers on Item 21? Any other speakers? Okay, I believe that completes public comment on this item. Thank you all very much for coming this evening and for your comments. I'm going to ask that we table discussion and action on this for a few minutes and that we go to Item 20, the Measure T1. And so... So we're going to go to Items 20A, B, and C. And please have order. We'll get back to 21. So I would like to make a motion to... I would like to make a mo... Ma'am, please. I would like to make a motion to approve...